Welcome to today's work session. Today is November thirteenth, twenty nineteen. The time is now four, four oh one P M. It is a work session in Trinidad without some order, just to let you know. We're gonna try and get out of here by maybe five forty-five, because there's a few of us that have some places to go to today. So there's a couple of items on here that probably go relatively quick. So the first item will be pretty quickly, I'm sure. So the following items are on file for consideration for the city council. Item one, court fees from court of record. Item two, Sister Blandina Park discussion. Three, multimodal discussion. And source four is just in case council comes up with some additional items for future work sessions. So on to court fees. Mike, do you want to present that?
Actually, Mayor, I think the presiding judge and municipal court clerk are here to bring that item forward.
Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, Councilwoman Nelson. I'm the current presiding municipal court judge. Does very sound well, but municipal court clerk. Before you should be, a brief letter that we wrote. There's two things that we're proposing. The first is in regards to court fees. And as it states in the letter, currently our court fees are fifteen dollars for any fine or violation that comes before us across the board. So if someone pleads guilty or is found guilty at trial, that's the court fee that we assess, and that goes back to help kind of some of the costs that we deal with through the court system. The last time that was changed was in nineteen ninety-one, and it was raised from eight dollars. Des was able to do some work on the listserv to find out what other municipalities were doing, and I was able to call some local ones, what being Walsenburg and Aguilar. We are the lowest in the state from everything I can find. We're matched with Aguilar. They are fifteen dollars for court fees. Walsenburg and everywhere else is twenty-five plus additional fines. So we're pretty low. I think that it's a reasonable request to raise it up to twenty-five dollars to kind of keep us in line with other municipalities our size, and that it does help, you know, be in line with the cost that the court has itself. The second proposal is to become a court of record. One of the... John Garcia was an amazing judge, and I still am learning stuff from him. But he was not an attorney, so we could not be a court of record at that time. You have to be a practicing licensed attorney in the state of Colorado to be a court of record. Now that I am on board, and hopefully will be for quite some time, we can have that availability. My understanding, there'll be no additional costs as far as the equipment. We can use the equipment that we have now, but the benefits will be great. When I preside and have someone come in front of us, they... I ask them questions. If they plead guilty, I ask them, "Are you doing it freely voluntarily and of no free will?" And I note it in my files, and that's it. There's no proof that they actually did that. There's no active record to back any of that up. If they appeal, and it goes to the county court, it's a whole new trial, because there's no record for the court to look at. Mayor, yes?
Sorry, I have a question. How is that going to pertain to juveniles? I know that we've been handing some of our issues from the local school district over to you and municipal court. How do we keep them from becoming part of the court of record?
You better finish your introduction, then she can answer that.
Sorry, that's just one of the things that popped in my mind.
No, and I'll definitely address that. But if that record, it does, it helps the city, it protects the proceedings that are going on, and it helps. Additionally, we had a gentleman come in after a trial that we had where I did a verbal ruling. He came back in and wanted a copy of the transcript. Will we have the transcript to provide him? We did provide him with a written order, but it doesn't detail as much as gets said from the bench. Our councilman will, but to address your concern, it is a court of record, it is a transcript, so even the juveniles would be recorded. However, with juveniles, just as any, as the court file itself, the documents in any order that I would issue, they have the right to have an expungement of that. And it is removed from their record after a certain period of time. I believe it is thirty to sixty days after they've completed their sentence. So right now, we've been doing community service, so once their community service is proven done, it goes through us, we file all the paperwork, and it's expunged. That would include the transcript as well.
Okay.
Do you have questions?
No, I am... I was surprised to know that we are not a court of record. I understand why, with Mr. Garcia having been a long time. And I don't know who was there before him, if there maybe was an attorney, and that we were a court of record, and we weren't, and now we are, but here we are. And I think it's important and valid, and valuable to us to be a court of record, and I highly support that idea. And as, we're not talking about fines yet. I'll get there when I have a comment.
I agree. That's, I think that's a great thing to do.
What's the highest rate that you've seen for other fees in other municipalities?
Are we talking?
No, we're not a court of record.
Okay, sorry. I thought they were both combined. So it's, the document is a municipal court of record and raising court costs.
I'll end it there. Do you think we're a court of record?
No, my main thought was just about the juveniles.
Nothing different?
Nothing for me. Straight I C L.
Okay, let's go on to the cost side. Things change, things increase, fines increase, as all things should. Sometimes they're almost ridiculous. And I think we are dangerously close to being ridiculous. When I first started writing speeding tickets, speeding tickets were twenty-five bucks a year a shot. And now, they're like a hundred and sixty-five dollars, just because it needs to have value assumptions to what we're doing. And I don't mean to think that this is something we have to stay out of the situation and all that, but at the same time, it has to be bona fide, legitimate, and worth our while. And I think we need to be at least commensurate with other county courts or city courts or municipal courts.
Well, you know, it's a coincidence, because this was a subject of one of our work sessions. Remember, we had a lengthy discussion about this. And I was appalled at the low fees, the court costs we were charging, because I sat and did the math, you know, the number of people involved in issuing these tickets, you're not even breaking even on court costs. So I would even consider or be agreeable to increasing it to forty.
I have no strong feelings about the amount. I just believe that twenty-five is probably the lowest I would recommend, but if it were to be higher, I'd have an objection to that.
How many hours would you say between the two of you put in on one ticket?
It takes about ten minutes or so to put it into the system.
For interval from the date, the time you get into, the time it leaves you? How many minutes?
I couldn't even put it into a number, I don't believe.
Just to take a basic case, it comes into Des, she has to enter it in, then we have to have the hearing if they show up for the advisement, then they'll likely wait with Mr. Downs for a pre-trial conference, then come back, possibly set that for trial. If they don't show up, then Des is sending them letters, we're sending out bench warrants. So depending on the case, it can take a chunk of time.
Okay, so my point is asking you that, is minimum wage is what, eleven, twelve dollars? And I'm sure you ladies are over minimum. That's why now we're getting, we're expensing out to issue the ticket, which I know on a priority list, that's probably on the bottom, but I can't see the city losing money trying to enforce rules. So I would encourage you to bump it up if you can, and just pray that I don't get a ticket. No, I, I, this is something I've been waiting for.
I got a story about that.
Or, and I just don't know about this currently, but currently, do we relieve anyone from any of the court costs if they're found not guilty?
If they're not guilty, there's no court costs.
Okay.
No.
I'm in the same accord. I think that it should be higher, because just like if you start a project, whether it takes ten minutes or the full hour, it takes you away from another project you could be working on. And also, it might be a punitive deterrent to keep people away from staying out of your office. I would be amenable to keep it to thirty to thirty-five.
I would say, since we don't do this very often, I mean, the last time it was done was nineteen ninety-one, I mean, might as well shoot a little high. So my feedback would be more like forty, you know, because we're not gonna do it for another day and a half. And that would put us just above the level of the pack.
I think if we only went to thirty, we should add in admin fees also, or it should be a hair higher, like forty bucks, because I notice a lot of the other municipalities have a flat rate plus admin fees or other charges. We either need to go a little higher than thirty plus admin fees or forty bucks, I think that's the range we need to be in.
I would advocate more for the flat fee, the more admin, or the more different fees you break out, the more work that you put, Des having to break that out. Because a lot of that depends on the type of case, how much percentage is it allocated when it's a flat fee, that's your court cost.
You know, I'm the opinion to stay on the higher end of the forty dollar, simply because, you know, a long time that you people go forth to one of these, and that's still gonna be a couple weeks to come, what we have to do. I guess, Mike, I guess, put that forward in a...
Yep.
Something to bring towards us in front of you, or just... And then, for the first reading? Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, you know, I have many thoughts, but I... I know, I'm sorry I was late. It helps if you're on time and you didn't hear from the beginning of the conversation. But I, you know, I always kind of err towards the side of doing it gradually and incrementally, but I do understand, I mean, you know, the forty dollars or whatever, it's hard to argue against that. And I do feel it's better if you have one fee. Like when you're in county court, say, you're representing a client on a DUI, there are like forty different fees that have to be assessed, and it's just easier if you have one flat fee. So that's my very valuable contribution to the discussion, and again, sorry I was late.
Okay.
On the court of record, I, you know, again, I wasn't here when that began. Thank you, Mike, I appreciate that reminder. And the only problem is how hard it is now to get lawyers to fill in for, you know, the judge if she has either a conflict or can't be there, or myself in the eventuality that I have a conflict, or I can't be there. It is really hard to get lawyers to fill in. But it's high time that we have a, that we are a court of record, and we be a court of record. I certainly agree with that. And, you know, just to make it all about me, because that's what I do, when a person comes in here and there's a trial, and I get a conviction, and then they appeal to county court, they get it for any reason, like the lady said, and I'm the one who has to redo it. I'm the one who goes over to county court, and they have a trial de novo, and so anyway, yeah, I think it's a great idea to be a court of record. And then you have to have legal grounds upon which, and you have to have error for an appeal. And if there isn't an error, then they don't get an appeal. So, yeah.
So, I'd rather, would this be able to be brought forward to us, because of the board, or does that's gonna have to be an ordinance, correct? So can we do that together with the fee, or is that, we have to be different?
The package should have had...
It does, if it has the ordinance.
So we just need to adjust the fee of order to whatever council's desire is.
Just want to double check.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work here.
Yeah. You know, item two, Sister Blandina Park discussion, like I said, we've had this discussion before, and one of the things that came up was there was a concern about the amount of time that a maintenance portion of it, that seemed to be the major item that was a concern. We need another park in town. I have a couple of ideas about, a couple of other things, but I think let's go ahead and go forward with some thoughts. Can we, anything to say about Sister Blandina Park?
Well, I learned the one thing to do, I'm gonna keep this shut today, this open and these open, and that's what I gotta say today about Sister Blandina Park.
Right.
I was surprised to see it back on here with so much other stuff we have. I understand the Chuminos group's desire to have that as a park here in town, but I think financially, the timing is not the best still for us to go with the money that's gonna cost us with the park, with the other projects and stuff we have going on. I still feel the same about it.
I was concerned about, as you said, maintenance, but my bigger concern was the sort of decent liabilities that it created in the package. In other words, if this thing weren't finished on time, then they could come in and name the contractor, and some bill to the city, and, or the improvements that were deemed necessary by the lease weren't done in a timely fashion by the city. And I thought, well, you know, I don't know, does that make it jump to the top of the list of all the city parks? But there are a few other items, and, you know, I didn't bring my papers with me, but that's a concern. I did not like the lease, as you made it, but right, yeah. So those are my thoughts.
I echo the same sentiments.
Well, I had a discussion with the city manager, and we were talking about parks, and we were specifically talking about the line of thinking that I had regarding maintenance and liability issues. And I was really concerned about the design of the park, because I'm afraid that if the facade is there, it's gonna be hard to try and maintain vagrants and vandalism and things like that. But I, you know, and I think the worst part of what happened in that last presentation was I felt pressured, I did not have enough time to make a good decision, because the information that I needed wasn't available to me at the time. I think, you know, I, I have two, there's two sides of this discussion. I think if, is it Kip Hampton is doing this, or is it...
Yes.
Okay. If Kip Hampton is doing this project, I would like to have some input from the city as far as what the terms of the lease is. You know, I looked at, and I, by far, am not an architect, but there were a lot of features in that park that all of our other parks don't have. And the first thing I think about when I see that is maintenance and cost of construct. If we could start out, and if you would be agreeable to start out very simply, just with very basics, and if we can get the funding, I think we better, I think we should, if we address it.
Bless you, boss.
I mean, it was just, it was chaos in there that day, and I, I just don't work well under those conditions, and it was just too much for me. And then we switched gears right in the middle of the conversation, and that would, that, well, let's do this, well, I gotta, I have to think about this, I have to talk to people on staff. I'm not one hundred percent on board, but I'm not gonna short shut the door on the project I'm in.
I think that I would agree with what Karen just said. It presents an opportunity, but at the same time, sometimes it's like trying to get a drink out of a fire hole. It's overwhelming, and we move at a different and a slower pace than perhaps the Chuminos group is used to working at. And we have greater concerns and greater accountability to staff, because it's not our game totally. And we have other priority projects. A park is valuable, a park is essential. A park is nice, it's not essential. It's not like a lung or a heart. La Puerta and that sewer system, that's essential. Some of the other things we are doing have greater priority in my mind, beyond beautification of an area. And beautification is good, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. But I would prefer that we just take, to emphasize Karen's point, a slower, more deliberate approach, so that we are all in agreement of the contract, and the things that are important from our perspective, that we can...
I agree with you, Karen. I believe that maybe a little simpler design possibly to the project might be good, and that's why I recommended that evening, that we, you know, we were not able to go forward with applying for the grant now, but maybe looking forward to this coming year to be able to find probably additional funding, is what we're talking about, to give us some time to work on this thing. So it's not like we're going to do this immediately.
So, Phil, I think that's why we wanted to be here today, because we just wanna give you our vision, and ask you, you know, input. I mean, the truth is, you know, I'm not sure how we got there last, last time.
What did you just come up with, ma'am? I'm sorry, it just something where, it's all recorded, you know, you can't catch back there. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Gina. Nice to see you all again. Um, so, this, this is a vision that, you know, we've had, and have really, it's been a work in progress for a couple of years. We've never really unveiled it, because it's changed, you know, over the years. But the real mission in, with this park is to, at least for us, is to keep the heart and the soul of the town, right? The heart and soul of Trinidad. That's what this is all about. It's not about who owns what, honestly, whether we own it or not, we're the stewards of this. We want this, this to be able to be a community asset for the next hundred years, where none of us are here, okay? That's, that's really where, where this is coming from. And there's, there's lots of examples of, of, of keeping the heart and souls of different towns. I, you know, Trinidad is, is, you know, certainly on the track to do that. We, you know, I was thirteen years old when we lived in Santa Fe, New Mexico. And if I were to go back to Santa Fe, New Mexico today, you know, the plaza is there, the church is there, the buildings are there, everything's there, because it's been preserved, and that's the heart and soul of Santa Fe. So really, in the same light, that's what we're trying to do here with this Sister Blandina, so I can talk more about that. I was in, it's interesting, you know, Dana Crawford did the same thing with Larimer Square, and I remember talking to her about this story. She was that emphatic about keeping Larimer Square at its own beauty, right? You know, keeping it beautiful the way it is, and not, not making it sensationalized with, with chains and things like that. I had the opportunity to go and visit my daughter and son-in-law last week in Vincenza, Italy. And here's a historic town that is five hundred years old, stayed in a place that they paint, and it was original, dating back to the fifteen hundreds. And it's all historic, there's this big, there's this big wall that, that goes around the historic district. This is an actual picture of, of what this town looks like, and they've maintained the historic...
I'm like Judge Judy here.
You can pass it around. But in, but where I'm going with this, and although this picture doesn't show it, there is a park in the historic district of this town that, you know, we were able to, you know, walk through and enjoy as part of walking around that town. So, um, that's...
I think that's what we're really trying to say, is it really...
Let me interject something here real quick. One thing that I have heard, not from you or from us, I've heard from other people to say, you know, a centralized, small park downtown is good for a community. And that, that's what, and I believe that's kind of where I'm coming from, you know, at part of that.
And that's kind of, and what we're saying is, you know, we're sorry, because that GOCO grant, I think we all jumped, think as we knew it existed, it really doesn't matter if, if Jay and his family, Kip Hampton, still owns the park, if you guys still own the park, it's, it's the, it's, we're trying to be good stewards for the property itself. You know, I first bought land here when I was in my twenties, and when I walked across the property, I was like, oh my gosh, how can I own this? And I, I'm just paying the price so I can be there. I'm just paying the price so that I can walk on this property. At some point in the future, somebody's gonna pay a price so we can walk on the property too. And we're just trying to honor this property by being good stewards to this property. When it comes to the namesake, so it's like William Hone, William Hone had orchards and food and stuff that he grew out, out east of town, and so that's how Hone got his name. And George Simpson did not own Simpson's Rest, he was up there in respect to what he did for the city of Trinidad, what he passed on, we called it Simpson's Rest. Sopris, with E.B. Sopris, a businessman, cared about the town of Sopris, and created jobs, and created ways that people could go all through the coal mine, and went after Sopris got covered to save the city of Trinidad, well, we had named it Sopris in honor of him. The Barker Blumhouse, another great example, although they did have some ownership in that. The Chenoweth Award from Judge Chenoweth, we named it the Chenoweth Award for good community reservice and, and good stewardship. Sullivan Bridge, right on Commercial Street, most people don't know, is an architect in the area, that, that created that bridge, they didn't know if they could do it in the spans in the day, and they did, so it's the Sullivan Bridge. Chumino Park, when Jay helped with that area, and we can all remember what it was like, concrete dusty area, it was Mary Ora who decided to call it Chumino Park, not Jay. And now we're on to Sister Blandina, creating the first school system, creating the stories of Billy the Kid, the stories of the mind that I never even heard, Michael Fitzgerald, by the way, who's doing the sixth run set with Netflix on Sister Blandina will be in town this weekend. All the, all the things, she did all nations, she was for the school system. When our bus is running, it says the number one school system in the state of Colorado, it's because we're the first school system for Sister Blandina, and she deserves that respect. So it's not really that we, who's gonna have it, we're trying to tell you what our vision is, and get to be, to help us what youth needs to be right around, and we've heard a few of those things today. It doesn't, we're just wanting to be good stewards for our history for Sister Blandina, and good stewards for that piece of property. And, you know, we're already involved and working together as a partnership, no matter if it stays under the Kip Hampton name or whatever name, because it's located within the city of Trinidad, and we just want the best for however this works out.
With all due respect to the history lesson you just provided, and I was on the school board of school districts, number one, on many occasions, when I was at the Broadway at Casby, made a big damn deal out of being the number one school district in the state. So I understand the point you make, but your vision supersedes our reality. And our reality is telling you, we support this, we want this, not now.
Yeah, no, that's right.
I realize that Jay moves fast, and he has lots of ideas, he changes his mind, and we're always going. I can't listen as fast as he talks sometimes, okay? Maybe we can help slow him down just a little bit. Not in a, in an attempt to control Jay, but in an attempt to live within the precepts of our reality, and what we can and cannot afford, or are willing to do at this time.
If I could speak to that a little bit, that when we did get together, it was the timing was only, it wasn't Jay, it wasn't the city, it was, it was precipitated by the fact that a GOCO grant is one time a year, right? The lease that, Michelle, I know you're really concerned about, was a workaround, because they said you had to have ownership. So I guess my part of this, timing is okay. I mean, if it, if, only part we'd like to know is if the city has an interest in a Chumino Park. Timing we can work with, all those things, the, the design even, you know, we, you saw probably five iterations of the park, right? Of different, like roads going through it and all that. The last one actually came back from some feedback, in fact, there was an article yesterday in, about Trinidadio, might go from being one big thing to small, or four different weekends, and maybe a couple different venues. So that idea came to one, how about maybe if it was a little bit more of an amphitheater for music? So we're open to your ideas. If you remember what we talked about, is the whole design is more than we knew we could do even on the grants. So we said, if all we did was grass, right, and maintain grass, but put it, get it in the slope, right, so it could be an amphitheater, that might be all we do in the next year.
And it might, yeah.
You know, let me interject here, I think what it really boils down to, like I said from the last meeting, is like we've got, you know, probably another four, five months, six months, you got to be here. Going forward to see, what I would like to see personally, is probably a simple plan, we've already got a technical plan, and I think what we need to do is try to look at what the cost between two different plans would be, bring them back to council, and let's take a look at it and see what those, what those costs would be without, and we would settle on one of those without any changes.
What would be helpful, Phil, is if we got some feedback from the council of what they liked about it, and what they didn't like about it, and what we might want to keep in, and what we may want to either leave out or delay, or whatever.
I think, I think Karen, after sort of that letter, the question there, what our concerns are, and what she's basically saying, that's what it is.
Right.
You know, we're, we're about vandalism and stuff like that, we, you know, we looked at Chumino Park, yeah, great park, I love that park. How many parks do we have, Audra, in the city of Trinidad? How many men do we have to take care of these parks? Those are things that we gotta consider and look at, and if we start off simple, like they said, and maybe, you know, my wife told me, gotta have something there. You can't have just a plot of dirt with two buildings were tore down, it looks like heck.
Right.
So, yeah, we gotta move forward in some way, but we just don't want to be pressured into something that we're going to do wrong.
The only reason it felt pressure was the GOCO grant. Other than that, that's gone, you know, if we go after it, it's next year. If there is some other funding opportunity that becomes available along the way, I think if the city wants to pursue it, we're willing to join in on that. I think, Karen, this, this section where we talked about vagrants, when you, when you look at it versus the property, it's only about thirty-five feet of...
So it's not the whole...
And the only reason for that, Karen?
Is the facade.
Is the facade of the building that we...
So on the scope of that...
Okay. So it's not border to border?
No, it's, it's that little one.
Oh, okay.
So here's the whole park, and it's just, this is this little... And it's just, this is this little spot right there. So you can see it's the, it's only the, the entry is this little.
All that just work.
So this is all pretty open and visible. I don't think there's a lot, and, and thickness is like four feet thick. There's not a lot of places to hide. Um, and even there, when we look at this, there's not, with bathrooms across the street. So you don't have people sleeping in them and things like that. So all of this, I think we could, we would love to have the city's input, you know. It's, and, and it could be in stages, you know, again, in that first plan, we talked about grass and doing the entry feature and not having it there.
I have a question. So just so people out there that are watching this, they want to know, basically, one, you want to create a park and then hand it over to the city of Trinidad.
No, we wanted to create, we would like to create a park.
For the city of Trinidad.
In partnership, however that works, if you guys want it, if we, whatever. Regardless of, regardless of ownership, we would like to create this community asset for the betterment of this town to, you know, maintain the heart and the soul of the town.
Okay, so with that being said, hang on, let me finish please. With that being said, if for some reason this council or the future council that's about to take these seats chooses that they don't want to do this, what is your next plan? Are you going to continue to pursue this Sister Blandina park and then maintain it on your own accord? And have it as a private property entity that is not public to, or open to the public? Or is it going to be your gateway for your hotel that's going to be there at the Snyder Brewery? That's, is one of the proposals for.
And that's a possibility.
It's a possibility.
That's a possibility. If it winds up that the city really isn't interested in a park, we've got to figure out another use. And it could be that Jay decides to still build a park. Or it could be the entry to the Snyder Brewery, or it could be a piece of land to develop. Um, it's not really on the table that way, but it could be. I mean, it's a, it's a prime piece of downtown real estate and with the development that's going on here. But the, the, we look at priorities. The highest priority in Jay's mind is a park for the city to use and we would do that in partnership. Like we've got thirteen other, fourteen other parks around the state that, you know, we invested in and then it was granted back to the city and they do the maintenance.
And, and that's a thought that really needs to go out there. So Jay has been involved in fourteen parks in Colorado Springs and Denver area that he's done the same thing.
Well, playgrounds.
Playgrounds. And so it's not something new that he's come up with, it's something new.
Do you, I know you were going to take some consideration or look into any, any consideration that you have to have.
Um, well, I'd like to back up a little bit. Previous administration, a couple of city managers back, was in discussion with the group and I'm not defending anything, I'm just saying, and they were going to tear down the buildings and it was brought to them that we don't want a hole in the city. Don't tear the buildings down, but if you do. So they brought forward the first design and then it changed and then it changed and then administration changed. So, um, this is just another iteration. I definitely want to see the last one to be final. So, but with that being said, I think maintenance wise, and I'll talk to Tom just a little bit about it. If it's grass, okay, and on a sprinkler system, we have to blow out the sprinkler system, we have to mow it, we have to, you know, sweep the few walks that are in there, but if you start putting fountains in and all kinds of fancy stuff, that's, that's our.
Yeah, we took that out.
Well, there is the one Sister Blandina fountain, but it's sort of like a pub lane. It's, it's not, it's not wrong.
So my recommendation at this point would be to, like I mentioned, let's get a couple of different plans that will be final. And then this council could, if the council's going to get into this, we would say this is the plan or this is the plan. And then we could also try to look at maybe what those costs might be.
Well, like, you know, initially there was one of those water, you know, it was like in, in Chino Park and Mike's, Mike's verbiage does is, those, that, that thing's an expensive thing to keep, an expensive thing to build, so we pulled it out. And, you know, in place of that became a picnic park, you know, where people can sit and have a lunch.
And just to, and to add to that is that, you know, we're sorry that we haven't come to really told you all about Sister Blandina park and kind of the, the feeling that we had, but, but we have talked to city managers a couple in a row and some of their input was how some things morphed too. So we felt like we were dealing with all you, because we were dealing with representative of the sister, uh, um, of the city. Um, and so right now we know that we need to come to talk to you and we just, again, all want to be as a group, the best stewards we can for this piece of property so that it's not an eyesore in the truth of Trinidad and it helps people want to walk around, so it's pretty.
I agree that we, we need to do something with that property because we just can't be good.
So.
Just like that one thing, the lease, it's critical. It imposes a lot of obligation.
Yeah.
I don't believe in placeholders in the group, seven years of.
Now, basically, Michelle, all we're trying to do is say.
I don't believe in placeholders, so.
You'll maintain it and if somebody falls down and breaks the leg, they're not going to sue you, you know, kind of thing. Yeah, that's, that's really the.
Now, but the reliability is to maintain it. If we didn't maintain it, we would be handed a bill by contractor.
That was a turn, we didn't even know.
To get that on short notice.
It was a one, it was a one day, fourteen page lease to meet GOCO.
It wasn't there.
And, and so, again, it would be something totally different.
Let's, let's.
I, I would tear the, to be honest with you, I'd burn, burn, because the truth is this, the truth is that was drafted, it was never looked at, it was never reviewed. I'm not quite sure how it got to the city, but I never saw the lease.
Oh, because GOCO had to have a lease.
So let's do this.
So burn, so, so burn the lease.
Let's go ahead and do this.
Play a lot of beer.
Let's go ahead and do this. Let's go ahead and get, like I said, let's get to two plans.
Yeah.
That, and council could settle on one or the other or none. And then after, if, once it's settled upon, if there's something that council wants to do, then we look at a lease or outright purchase or whatever after. I think that's probably the way to go forward. We could probably do this right after.
So this is the part, this right, right now is.
Before we buck up, we understand your vision. Do you understand our reality?
Yeah, we do, absolutely.
Okay, so we're, we're parting on a common understanding, is that right?
Right.
What I would love to have, because we can go back and draw a whole thing up and everybody says, oh, we don't like that. If there's someone on council that maybe I could talk to, you know, hey, we like this or we don't like that. Then we could, we could, I can talk to Jay, we can pull this out, we can do that and come back and say, here's a simplified one. And also remember, it could be in phases. It could be, hey, I do want this, but in the first couple of years, let's just, let's keep the.
You want, if there's somebody on council that would be the contact, okay?
Well, that's kind of so convincing staff though, isn't it? I mean, the protocol is to go to staff and staff will loop you in all gentlemanly at the same time. Right, I'm sorry, excuse me.
That was one of the other problems about the last proposal.
Staff didn't get a chance to review it.
Right.
Well, Karen, speaking of, Karen had it for two years.
Okay.
Yeah, and was involved in a lot of conversations and gave a lot of input on it too.
So I don't know who the staff, who would that, who would that be?
That would be me and I would disperse to council and get better employment.
Yeah, so if you.
And I would suggest that, you know, if you have a couple of concepts, uh, engineer's estimate or architect's estimate, however, on cost.
This is what happened. And things for saying that, Mike, they do want to add because Mike said that, that we weren't talking to the last two general managers of the city and they weren't giving us input and we were following them, thinking they were coming to you, so we're sorry for that.
I do like the idea with the band shell in there, the prospect of possibly the Blues Fest. Changing menus and different stuff. I think that's a great ideal and it would be a great use for the park.
Mike said before, any.
We've had a blow up TV screen for years in the box.
So you're just talking, just talking amongst us right now, it seems like we're amenable to it and let's just ask more discussion.
Perfect.
Okay. Let's go on to the third item on our list here, which is the multi-modal discussion. Mike?
Uh, so council and I don't know if the group wants to stay up there, but, um, in La Porta, I think we're managing a visual.
Yeah.
The old Santa Fe depot is part of, uh, the overall La Porta idea and they're, they're talking a visitor's center, they're talking, you know, a little retail shop in there. They've been in discussion with the city about possibly multimodal facility. That being the, uh, Amtrak station and, you know, I know that Amtrak built a six million dollar platform across the way, so possibly having a place for Amtrak passengers, bus passengers, a place for them to land and get brought into the city and then, then over into, you know, to the train or back and forth, shuttle, a walkway, something. Um, so those discussions have been, being had and there was even possibility of a transportation grant with, guess what, a deadline of November eighteenth. Not asking for it right now, you know, but, um, that's coming around again. It, it's a year of the ask. I don't know, it might even be, there might be two rounds of ask, but for sure in another year. So I just wanted to, uh, let council know that those discussions aren't happening. Uh, the possibility of, I don't know, Chamber of Commerce, the Welcome Center moving over to here, depending on how the state falls, but, uh, I don't know if you have any, anything to add or if, uh, Kip Hampton group would, you know, in there.
Yeah. So, I mean, has there been any contact? I know that Amtrak's probably not going to move off of that station. We would have to make a, a way across Commercial Street, but how about with Greyhound Bus Services, any contact? Any interest in moving it from the gas station, the truck stop where it's at? I mean, have, you have, and they are amicable to them?
Yes.
They're open to the discussion.
Open to discussion.
Yeah.
The, the bus stand, the Los Americanos.
Greyhound.
All those.
Greyhounds and all.
Yeah, transportation, you know, people coming up and down the highway. They come into town and like you said, right now the Greyhound stops, you know.
The truck stop.
Truck stop, they never get into town.
Isn't that part of that? Because the truck stops twenty-four hours.
I think it is.
There's always an open receiving area.
Yeah.
And how is that going to compare to?
Well, with that being said, that's one of the issues of discussion is who's manning this.
Is there going to be a retail facility that they have?
I might add to that, that before the bus station was out at there, the bus station was on JR West Main here. They were twenty-four hours at that time. And so with the whole project, if it were to, Kathy Ritter has written a letter to the city of Trinidad that was tagged on, um, when Greg was here, saying that, um, different monies from the state of Colorado may be rethought as the Welcome Center if we were to move on an exit like La Porta. Um, so that's out there too, from, at the state level.
You know, the big question here is, um, the building, the build out of it, who's going in it? Who's going to share in the cost? Uh, what it's going to cost us? Or is it going to be on a lease basis? Is it going to be a donation back to the city? I mean, uh, you know, these are all details that, uh, and discussions that we're going to have to have moving forward. So it's good, just like the Sister Blandina park, it's a good time to begin a good sort of discussion moving forward to see if it will or will not work. We have had some discussion with the council governments about if they want to participate out there and we'll see what happens.
Well, they said no.
Yeah, they did. They didn't want to, they couldn't afford it to be manned out.
I would say initially they said no, but, uh, we met with them and, uh, in speaking with their transportation manager, Ann Walt. Um, it was part of the reason for the dead no was they can't manage it, they can't do that. So those issues can be worked around and they, they would listen, so.
Because of, you know, if other entities are ongoing, if the Chamber of Commerce goes in there, if, uh, Welcome Center goes in, there would be more staff available to, to staff the, you know, the building, so, or at least to staff.
And you know, there are some stations where they just, after certain hours at night, they're just open, but, in facilities, but they're not manned. You know, there's very little in them for people to break. They have big solid oak benches, et cetera. But we also do have a credit, if I believe, coming back from, was it CDOT? Because the, uh, the waiting station that we used to have there was removed and they had like a two or two hundred fifty thousand dollar credit in our favor for that particular place for people to reside.
I'm not sure if that went away altogether, but I don't know.
I'm like, who did it last?
The initial, um, design, because I was here back then, was fifty thousand dollars for just a glass shelter. The last time they came around was about a year ago and Greg brought me kind of a design that an architect did and it was, I think it was like two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
It was a glass shelter with a brick wainscoting on it and, you know, no restroom, nothing for, you know.
Very bare bones.
Bare bones, um, so is there a credit I'll have to?
Well, they were supposed to pay as a reverse, because we had a shelter of some sort there and everything. And then they put in a little rinky dink spot and they yanked that out of there too.
Now, I'm talking to Pete Ritter's officer a few months back. He had mentioned that CDOT, and I'm not sure if it's between CDOT and Amtrak or the CDOT alone, they're talking about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That, that's the number I remember that was.
And, uh, they were talking about a building, a small glass building or glass, a building of some sort that could be moved from one spot to another if necessary. What we could do is we could talk to Pete. Um, I'm not sure if I'll see him tomorrow or not, um, because I'm going into a meeting. If he's there, I'll give him a call and ask him to see what that money is all about, if it's there, if they're still planning on moving forward with it or not. If could, if we could maybe take that money and possibly move it toward this project, I don't know if that's a doable or not.
Will this have any type of effect like with the Southwest Chief, with, with the decision of going opposite way to Trinidad? I mean, have you ever thought about, about that? I mean.
Yeah, so South, South.
We did have a meeting last week that I was at and they were talking about, uh, at some point we will have to be talking about substations. So, but that's the thing, that's the thing, you've got to decide what, there's going to be one in, uh, Lahana, there's going to be one in Trinidad. And of course we talked about Pueblo, we talked about Colorado Springs, we talked about Fort Collins, Denver. So there's going to be substations in different areas.
Well, I understand it, but if they're going on the Southwest Chief, then the only way to get to New Mexico is through that tunnel. And then they can talk all about the front line, the front range as much as they want to, but they got to come here to get that, right?
Exactly.
But at one time the talk was coming from Albuquerque and checking this whole section out.
That was possible.
That was a definite possibility of a conversation.
Uh, this is on trail of like that.
For Oklahoma?
We're hoping to, in answer to what you're, what you're saying is that with all the money, with the entire grants, if they put money into and the replacement of some of the rails and ties and stuff going through here, I think it's a little more on the positive side that that will continue.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think one thing, I think you mentioned that, um, COD was not in favor of this because the funding, the year ago or three years ago or five years ago was in direct competition for the buses and their cars and things. This, this current funding is specifically to a facility multimodal. So that's why I think COD was more amenable because it no longer was competing. It's a separate funding mechanism. So, so it didn't hurt, you know, their budget. So, um, this is from Grant. I think you already got this. I could give this to you. It kind of explains.
Well, when we had that meeting with them, uh, it was self-explanatory. We understood that well, that they did not compete.
Right. So this, this is that piece that Grant did. I could leave this with Mike and if you want to share that.
Did we all get a copy of that on the call?
I don't think.
Well, that's.
I think it's probably that.
So you can decide if you want to get that out. So you already got that from Grant?
Yeah, I do.
Like a month ago.
And this is the proposal for the funding?
This is just, yes.
It's, it's funny information about where the funding is coming from. It would be, we got a year to work on it, right?
Sure, but it takes time with government to get things done.
That's why, that's why we're trying to get ahead of it. But that gives you some.
And I, I appreciate the discussion. That's why I, I can, I value that you get hit cold sometimes and so that's why the discussion is happening.
Thank you.
So in the other side of where that's at with the multimodal and like I said, we'll have town, we're more discussion going forward.
I can stand. I think this would be a great thing for downtown Trinidad, honestly. I, I, I mean, having the, the truck stop, um, bus depot up on. bus depot up on the south side of town does no one downtown any favors really. And with the train coming through here and then with the other bus lines up, we could acquire business into the downtown corridor. I mean, I, I don't know what you all are thinking out there, but I think you should definitely be leaning towards that.
Transportation we have, problems is.
And the train, it's, for some people, it's the only way to get to two major cities without, if you don't have a car. It's it.
No, I think it's, I agree. I think the last piece, I was disappointed in that drop. Funding, if it could be a partnership, if, if it could be the visitor's center, you know, that's, that gets people off there, not just bus, but the visitor's center.
Your information center, your Chamber of Commerce there, Welcome Center there, put everything right there.
You know, one of the things we talked about was having maybe one space to create opens. Maybe a whole wall that would be rotating art exhibits that says, you know, go down to this location and you could see this artist's, you know, and encourage people to stay for a minute, you know, go to a restaurant, you know, and, and visit the galleries and everything else. So it could be a, a multi-dimensional facility.
Yeah.
Well, we got a few things we have to research and then, like I said, I'll, I'll check on that funding for this one building they wanna do and see if maybe it could be moved to this possibility.
And hopefully we didn't leave money on the table with that CDOT situation with the, the building.
All right, I had informed you of discussion of other possible items. One item that I thought about that I don't think we've ever really finalized, and last, I think you might have been in on this. Did we ever iron out all the stuff about the Airbnbs?
No, we haven't. And I, that's.
I would say let's go ahead and get that on another agenda.
Lined up. We kinda had to juggle because of tonight and need to get out and juggle some things around. But we have our code. I have this code on December ninth, I think we decided on for, that should be a fun day of legislative days in the morning. Nineties code at night. But that's just the way things are falling and because of everything we've got going. But the Airbnb is, we had to move it down, but it's, it's still.
I just wanna bring it up, just to make sure it's still on tap somewhere.
I think that's part of the nineties code, isn't it? Or at least a portion of the issue is, which is, can you have unlimited Airbnbs? And then the other side of the issue is, how do we collect taxes?
And there were issues raised by Airbnbs that can be addressed, by the way, in this code. I mean, I, I'm not sure if it exists now, but anyway, yes.
Cause they're getting Uber type attention right now.
Right, yeah. They overlap. I mean.
You know, just, you know, the lack of protection for some of that.
Right.
Any other items that council can think of that would, should be on the future agenda?
Future, the Blues Fest for sure.
Yep.
After Mr. Campbell was in here, I think we need to look at that.
Murals and signs?
We do have the new, we, we had a little talk about this earlier with the Arizona, the Supreme Court ruling and stuff. I'm not sure, are we defining murals as signs or what in the new code? I mean, that's important that we know where that's gonna set, because with the Supreme Court ruling, content is not something that you can dictate any longer.
I, I don't know if the new code, how it treats murals, if that is signage. My inclination is to say that murals are not signs.
Which is good.
But, but it depends. I mean, a mural could be an attempt at being a sign, right? You could have something that is promoting a business, but you can call it a mural, but it's actually a sign, if that makes sense.
Yeah, if you have something that has arrows, it's this way to fun.
Right, right, yeah.
You know, you just have an arrow pointing to something.
Very square inch of signage on my building. And now I see people emblazoning their stores with crazy stuff that I couldn't ever do.
Well, you know what, something I know we shouldn't really be talking about, about this, but somebody that was against the mural project in Trinidad gave me an email and I'll, and I'll find it again. But it was some kind of court decision that came up with this ruling that if an artist puts a mural on a building, that's protected. That is the artist's property. You can tear the building down, but that art depiction is. Well, because then the, then the owner of that building relinquishes the right to wear that piece of art.
Would that apply to a resident? Someone could draw a mural on my house?
If you give them, yep.
Well, if it's your house.
Give them permission.
And then, and then it's.
Go out and do it.
Then it's the artist's position and you relinquish.
I gotta make that right. This is gonna need, this is gonna need some deep discussion when we get to it, so let's win, put that down.
I did have a comment, though not for a potential item, but pertaining to November twenty-fifth work session discussion for the plastic bag. I sent out a lot of information to my Valentine. I'm hoping he sends some more to you. I also received some more in yesterday. Yeah, sorry, it was just, it was a litany of things that came to me, so I just wanted to make sure you all got it. From Kendra Black, who is a city council member of Denver, who's also on the CML Executive Board. And they're going through another proposal just like this too, so I will be forwarding that off to Mike. So I'm sorry if there's another couple of documents coming your way, but I figure the more proposals we have to review and maybe, you know, pick things that are good and bad, either for or against for us objectively, would only be useless in the long term if we choose to go with something like this.
We need an update on Norris.
On what?
Norris. What's going on?
In a boardroom?
You're right, yeah. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, Mike, any, you have anything else?
I do not.
Yes, you know, I was just gonna say that if any, and I think the case you were referring to, council, is Gilbert versus Arizona. But if you have any Supreme Court cases that you know by name or citation, that you would like a copy of or you wanna discuss, please just let me know. We discuss privately or, you know, but any, any cases you want, okay?
Well, I know in the codes that everything had to be changed to, just because of that case, not just for us, but everywhere. So I think it's important.
Is that US Supreme Court?
It was the United States.
Was that Gilbert versus Reno?
Oh, man, yeah, Gilbert versus Reno.
With panhandling, didn't it? I thought they had to do a panhandling.
It did, but it's signage. It's panhandling with a sign.
The freedom of speech.
That's right. The reach is broad. I, I don't have for a second that it pertains to both, but it may be an additional, you got a case.
Yeah.
We'll have a good discussion on that.
Yes, we will.
Karen, okay, what is the schedule?
The open house.
The open house for the library.
When does the open?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.